So now that we're recording, I want to do that recognition piece again. And I do apologize, but I think it makes a lot of sense to do so. And I want to make sure we get the attendance on there. So right now, we have eight board members present. Right now, Anita Tripp is not here at the meeting with us. She didn't call ahead and let Tom know that she may not be able to make it this evening. So we wish her luck in her, with her situation. So since we recognized, tonight you're going to hear from the Booster Club. And I wanted to talk and recognize a few students. Mr. Reddy was able to provide me with a list of students who were instrumental in the Booster Club fundraising effort, part of which you're going to hear about in a little while. So we want to make sure we give special recognition to Mariah Normandin, Ella All, Abby Newell, and Anthony Tora for their efforts. And we want to say that they much appreciated for what they're doing for not only the programs they're involved in, but all the programs for all students here at the school. It's much appreciated, and thank you to those young people.
Yep, absolutely. Do the, how am I supposed to?
Yep, sure. So we have two presentations. The first is from Al. And for board members in the room here with us, Al is in the center block of your screen at the top. Looks like he's sitting comfortably in his office up in Washington County. So we are using the Washington County as our, as our tax collector this year. I asked him if he could come on. Al, you're going to have to unmute yourself. And if you could just give us an update on, kind of overview of the process and update on the collections, that would be appreciated. You unmuted, but it looks like we can't hear you. Let's try this. Toby, can you just unmute and make sure we have sound coming through?
I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Al, is there any chance your microphones turned off up there? Do you want to jump out and jump back in? Want to try that? And we'll, we'll move on to the Booster Club with Michelle. While Al's going to jump out and come back in. Hi, Michelle. For the board members in the room, you can see Michelle in the bottom right-hand corner. We've got you down there. It's, it's like playing Hollywood Squares here in the boardroom tonight. Michelle, whenever, whenever you're ready, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, I want to say thank you for letting me do this presentation to the full board. As a Booster Club member, it was not just myself, but we had a lot of community coming together that started in August to start some fundraising efforts for the school district. I need to thank our community, the surrounding communities, along with staff, board members who were able to attend, as well as anyone who helped donate and volunteer their time. Definitely Anthony Tora, Mariah Normandin, Abby Newell, Ella All, and Kathleen were also very instrumental in everything we've done. So with that particular basket raffle, that alone raised over $21,000. And we have continued to raise money, businesses donating. We have some businesses still sending money. We still have small grants that are outstanding. We formed a community committee and met with Mr. Ward because with all the uncertainties of even last year going into this year, starting this school year for our students, we wanted to make sure that they had some sort of normalcy. So we wanted to start with the extracurriculars, meaning getting our yearbook going, getting National Honor Society, Key Club, Audi Club. We had the class officers. And we also had, was asked about the Adirondack League dues. So if by chance we are to have our winter and spring sports dues are actually something that are needed. So at this point in time, the donation that we have here in a physical check is $10,435, all to cover all those areas. I believe I've mentioned them all, including ski club. And the school, although this is just our first donation, we are also working with the PTO and trying to figure out the best way to move forward as far as supply donations. So there will be more to come. We still have additional fundraising efforts. We have some of our masks still that we can sell. The next one is going to be our steak bake. That will be in conjunction with the fire department. That'll be on November 7th from 1 to 5. Tickets should be on sale next week for $15. Again, everything we want to do, we will continue to meet as a community committee and working with Mr. Ward, who has been extremely helpful to be able to assist the district moving forward with the best things for our school.
Thank you, Michelle. It's fantastic.
Michelle, can you, can you say that number one more time?
I can.
Got it, thank you.
Michelle, special, again, just thank you to you and the Booster Club and having had an opportunity to work with you and all these students over the years, as well as the people that are a part of these clubs and groups. Thank you. Thank you for leading the way on that. And you know, I know I speak for the entire student body and faculty in saying thank you for, for doing that for the kids. We all appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. At this point in time, anything we can do for our kids is extremely important. Again, these are some crazy times we're dealing with. And Mr. Reddy, I wish you all the best. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. If you could come every week and give us a check that size, that would be fantastic.
I will say that if the funds keep coming in and these grants come in, I would be glad to try to do this on a month-to-month basis. I will get this check to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Michelle. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Noah, let's see if we can hear you now. No, we cannot hear you now. He's going to try. Is that the slider? Hey. Let me see if I can. I think it would be. So Al, if I call your direct line on my cell phone, can we try it that way?
Yeah, you can still be up there looking and touch the phone.
Yeah.
Check out. You have to order here.
Yeah, so we can, we can hear you. I'm going to move my phone. Close to the microphone. Let's see what happens.
Okay, so I have a little echo on my end, so bear with me. Thank you all for allowing me to join you for a couple of minutes tonight and give you an update on your school tax collections. The original collection period without interest and penalties extended through October 1st. During that period, 677 of the 1,233 tax bills was paid for a total of $1,455,729.45, which represents 55% of your levy. Since that date, we have received an additional 352 payments, bringing your total up to $2,231,716, representing 84.86% of your levy. So in the past two weeks, there's been a considerable amount of payments. A lot of those were CoreLogic, so that's a big batch. I have a report that I can send off to Mr. Ward to send it to the board members. I gave him the early one through October 1st. I have a secondary one that's done through today. On our end, the collection has been a little interesting with the COVID protocols in place at the building. In a normal year, I think that it would be a little more seamless than it has been, but I don't think it's been all that bad. The residents have been very cooperative as far as putting the checks in the mail. They're more receptive once they find out that we honor postmarks. I'd be very curious to see if you're getting feedback on your end. It's been very positive on our end.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak to our end because I'm in the office with, so Sherwood. So let's try this. So I can provide a little bit of feedback. Really, we've had some calls here to the school asking about taxes. And Michelle Sherwood has been redirecting them to Call the County about any questions about taxes. The bank has also had some taxes mailed there, or people have tried to drop them off. Anything that's mailed there, we've been picking up and either mailing them to the county or I've been dropping them off. If it's like the CoreLogic ones I brought up because it was a large stack of bills and would cost probably $20 to mail the 300 yards to county buildings. So I brought those up there in person. But overall, it's been a necessary relief to the business office staff on site and for Charlene for this to work through the county this year. An incredible amount of clerical work and day-to-day work is being done by the county, providing relief to us. For certain, the hours that we're saving and what they translate to in somebody's salary is much less than what we're paying the county to do this for.
Mr. Ward, are you the president? Are any of the board members have any questions?
Any questions for Al about it? And I'll get that when Al sends in that report. I'll get it out there for you guys to see. But it's, it's encouraging that we've received that much in just the last couple of weeks. And just a little bit of the process. And maybe, maybe Al said, but they, they do deposits on a daily basis and provide deposit tickets and reports to Charlene and, and me on a daily basis. So we do see the money, the money going in. So it makes Charlene happy to see that cash flow.
And if your, if your presentation will allow, I might be able to share that sheet on the screen.
So if you, if you have, Al, you can click Present Now down at the bottom on the white ribbon and it should let you present your screen. And if not, I can, again, I can get it out to the board when necessary.
Are you able to see this screen?
We're not seeing it right now, Al. We'll, we'll work out the kinks. I know, I don't think the county uses Google that often for their meetings.
No, we use Zoom.
We use Zoom, yeah. So we use Google with education because there's no cost for us. And it's a lot to be compliant, even the free version. So that's where we are. But if you send it to me, I'll definitely provide it to them if there's questions we can get back. But I wanted to thank you for coming out tonight. I know we talked about you doing this back in August. And then I, I got ahold of you last week and said, can you do it? And you wrote back, absolutely, one word. So.
Thank you, Al. We really appreciate it.
Okay, and if any of you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to call.
Thank you.
And Al, I got to tell you, the presentation was interesting because with the feedback, I felt like it was that Yankee Stadium when you read Barbara introducing all the hitters. So for the first time, I asked, listen to you, Al, so I appreciate it.
Al, that ain't personal.
There you go.
You got it, Al.
Thanks, Al. All right, I'll talk to you later. Have a good night.
Night, Al.
I just got to turn that speaker back on.
And I think I probably have said this before to folks, but Al is a, Al's a forever graduate.
Yeah, Al's a forever graduate. So Toby, just a simple shake of the hand, you can still hear us. Excellent.
Great, thank you. All right, next up is reports. Let's talk about the finance committee. You guys have all seen the reports that were in the Google Drive. And there's a whole lot of them. We've been asking for a whole lot of reports. So I think some of it was duplicate. That's why it was so overwhelming in number. But there was a lot of different reports that came through the Google Drive. So I'd like to request that we have a finance committee workshop prior to the special meeting on the 22nd, so we can kind of talk with Charlene and understand some of those documents that came through. I know there's a couple of things that I saw that just kind of startled my eyes. So I'd like to kind of understand the reports. So they're using a new system. And Charlene's approach is different than the approach of the person before. So, so I'm not so familiar with it. But if you guys agree, at least for the finance committee, but everyone's welcome, of course, that we do a kind of workshop prior to the special meeting on the 22nd, which begins at 6:30. So maybe 5:30, we can convene and do a workshop on all those things.
On the 22nd?
On 22nd?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Charlene, just to provide some, some background, the reports that we're receiving, and especially now that they're coming out, and a lot of them are coming out of InVision, they're not like anything that the board has seen. So they're just looking for kind of like a refresher on what those reports, each one of them, are and how to read them most effectively, so they can maximize their time when looking through this. This is what I took from the questions that Tom had asked me previously about the reports. We'll do that on the 22nd. Charlene, are you available on the 22nd at 5:30?
I, so yes.
That's the key component.
I will send out, I will send out an invite to the finance committee and to you, Charlene, so that you have it. And we will make that, as always, our committee meetings are public. So I'll have a link for that under our vertical meetings on the website once, once I have all the links and the invites and all that stuff done. So we'll have it out there. But I think that's a good idea just to go through because there's, there's a lot of new reports that we're seeing.
All these reports are mandatory and they are what the board should be receiving each and every month. And I absolutely want the board to understand that.
Yeah, so perfect. That's great, yeah. Because I know we got a couple of months there too, so going back and looking through those. Awesome. Thank you. Any other meetings that we have?
So I think how we take a minute and have some folks that were here for the building walk through, just speak to that if we could. Does anybody want to take the lead on, on that? We'll do that under Buildings and Grounds Committee. We'll just say we'll do it under, under Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Any feedback, folks? Any observations?
I was pretty good, I think, Lee. So we, you know, we toured around of what the classrooms look like, what the channel looks like as far as utilizing the cafeteria and going around and seeing the processes that they, they have going on every day at school. Pieces, so I think everything was, was pretty well. It's different going through with what we have now versus when we normally do the building tour. So it was a little different with looking at the classrooms and how the desks are spread out and the different space and how they utilize classrooms differently than, than we have before. Like the bandroom being for, I believe, fifth grade.
Grade four.
Grade four, which is interesting for that. So then we also, you know, had some characteristics about how the processes are as far as drop-off and pickup, different isolation rooms that were utilized in the building. Also, different protocols for, you know, cleaning and vacuuming every day and making sure that everybody's safe in the building. So it was, it was pretty good. That's, that's kind of what I took away from it. I'm not sure if anybody else has anything more to add, but.
I'll say if, if any, anybody had, was, was wondering about the safety protocols and guidelines and how things are set up in this building, it's really amazing how the building used, what we're getting out of this building. So we may have had rooms that were used, that were not used before, maybe not completely utilized. Everything is being utilized. So there is no, there doesn't appear to be a lot of extra space, but there's space enough for the kids and the teachers to function as they have to under the guidelines that were given. So kudos to the studio staff, administration, everyone who set everything up. For me, it reinforced that, yeah, we can be here. There shouldn't be much of a problem.
Yeah, kids, students coming in in the morning, like they used to, early in the morning prior, for breakfast and things. But as the weather gets colder and things, are they allowed to come in and social distance? And that's amazing.
So we, we won't be bringing kids in any earlier than we have now. We, we've been starting to screen kids at like 20 of, of 20 to eight, and they come in. The biggest piece is that in order for us to socially distance, once students come in, they're in. And since the summer, we've been asking parents to try to work their schedule as best they can. So the students are getting here a quarter of and no earlier. And the same with students who are walking here. Because if they're getting here at 7:30, a lot of times, they might want to come in, but we have our six through 12, and I know, I know Mr. Reddy's on the line, but our six through 12 in the pre-COVID days would come in, grab their breakfast, and want to go back outside. Right now, we cannot do that because we have to clear them twice. So once students are in, they're in. And I think a lot of our six through 12 at least don't want to be in waiting for first grade class for a half hour. They want to be in waiting for that five or 10 minutes to get that. So it's been working. We've been getting everybody in by 8:00 right now, starting when we're starting. Line is not hanging out outside for, for an hour. They're taking it out outside for really 15 minutes at most is what's been happening.
Are you finding more people than doing the taking care of it online?
Almost everybody. Almost everybody. But we're double checking them off. And we also have people at the front door with the thermometers. So we've got, we did have to move inside because of the cooler weather, so that our thermometer would take more accurate temperatures. And we also separated so that the six through 12 are coming up the front steps. Unless they have a need that doesn't allow it to climb steps, and we take them in the side door. And then pre-K through five, the K through five this year are coming through the K Street entrance. And there's three desks inside that entrance, about 15 to 20 feet from the entrance. So they come in, temperature can normalize a little bit. And then when they come in the front steps, they go all the way up to the area just outside the auditorium before their temp and before their, the computer is checked to see if the parent has pre-screened to come in. So let's them come in, let's their temperature normalize some, and so we can get better readings. But right now, we don't have a place inside to let everybody come in and hang out. We're using the caf, the gym as a cafeteria. It's socially distanced. We can fit 100 and about 150 in there socially distanced if we had to bring everybody in. But that means folks would have to cooperate and they have to sit down there, either in that desk or on that blacked out on the bleachers. And many of our six through 12 students would rather be outside for that 15 minutes than be inside on the bleachers, sitting on that blacked out Sixth Street Park, which I can understand. But certainly if they, if they need to come in when it's really cold and they want to, we've got enough space in there. Other, other about the building walk through? Anything? Nope. Thanks, thanks, folks, for coming out for that. It's, it's starkly different than what you would see a kindergarten classroom look like 12 months ago. But it was nice to see our, the finished project of our building project, even with some of the painting we did after our last building walk through. So put that out there.
So any meetings that we have to have prior to the next board meeting? We're going to have the finance on the 22nd.
None, none to my knowledge, we need to have right now.
Yeah, some of that is tied up.
Sure, there's nothing that it seems leaving us next week, so.
Been a couple of days. Next up is superintendent.
Yes, so, so three items on there. Number one, merger study update. I put committee selection on there just to update the board. And obviously, everybody who's out there online. I did contact everyone that has been selected for the committee so far. We do still have a couple of vacancies in, in key areas. And I have reached out to individuals in those key areas, large groups of individuals, hoping for some volunteers. We, we need to have that committee fully selected. Really, it was supposed to be by tomorrow, but by the end of the week. What I will say is all the community members have confirmed. So I'm waiting on one, one teacher. And I'm waiting on, on two members of the support staff. Good shape. Remote and in-person learning 10-week concern. Just want to bring this back up again. And we did, we do have a plan to send out a survey. And we're getting, we're getting to that spot we're going to have to. So just want to put it back to the board to let you know that if every student who is now remote chooses to come back for the second 10-week period, we do not have enough capacity in our building. And I think I showed that to the people who were on the tour today, that do we have some room in some grade levels? Absolutely. Do we have room in every grade level? We do not. We have several grade levels at capacity, which I shared before. You got to see the classrooms for yourself. And you can see that you just, you just can't do it. So we'll have to, we'll do the survey. We'll see where we end up. And we'll have to formulate a plan going forward from there. So I'll be working on that very soon. And it's going to be interesting to make that all work.
Have you had anybody reach out to you ahead of the survey?
We have, we had, actually, I had some students as soon as, even the first week of school, I reached out and saying, we'd like to come back to school now. And we had to say, sorry, but we can't accommodate that right now. So when we do the survey, we don't know if there'll be people who are now in person who decide they want to go in the opposite direction.
There might be.
So we'll have to, we'll have to do the survey and see where it lands. But we definitely had people saying they wanted to come back. Yeah, reaching out. And we also have a waiting list for in-person at some grade levels. I don't have those in memory, but we definitely have some folks wanting to come back.
So what does it come down to? Just, I'm sorry, but this time you can't?
Well, or we have to change the configuration for all students, right? So if we had, I'll use an example. It's not a true example, but I'll use an example. If we had 50 elementary students that were on remote that all wanted to come back, maybe our new model for elementary instruction has to be hybrid with multiple groups who attend a few days a week, similar to what's going on in the six through 12 right now. Again, that is not a predetermined thing. That's, that's an easy example for me to use for illustrative purposes right now.
At least it does allow them some kind of investment, knowing if they want to.
It does. We've been trying to, and we've been successful at maximizing students' time in the classroom. I'm very proud of the work that our staff and faculty are doing to make it happen for our kids because we all know, I've talked about it a few times. When our kids aren't here, you know, in the case if we have to go full remote, we have people working really hard, but something is lost by having to go full remote. And there's no doubt about it. So we'll, we'll do our best in that.
And related is the recent.
And related is the recent school closings due to COVID. So as everybody knows by now, we did have a positive case. We have one positive case. But the way with the contract tracing and how it works, it was, it was more advantageous for us to have the pause last Friday in the long weekend attached to that based on a conversation with our medical director, because that lets things reset. So we're not having, or the county is having to trace back. We have to worry about there being a larger web of people affected. So we were able to isolate that one case, close school early that first day. And I want to, I want to applaud our community, people and our staff and everybody. But they, the kids were ready to go very quickly, and people were here to pick them up very quickly. And that says a lot, a lot about our community and their commitment to having us do anything in our power to keep their kids coming to school here safely. So, you know, we had a few students who were straddling behind, waiting for rides. I think the parents were working and they were communicating with us. And we worked with emergency contacts and things to take care of all that. But everybody did a great job. And really, they got the call and an hour later, they were here picking their kids up. So I applaud them. And again, I applaud the staff for making that happen as well and preparing for the remote. And 30 minutes of preparing for their kids to be remote the next day. But the two-day pause made a lot of sense, let us reset the contract tracing protocols. And we're here today, and we hope we can continue to be here. But we're going to keep following our protocols when there's a positive. That's just what we have to do.
I got to say, really, I mean, since the school began, even the cooperation with taking those additional superintendent days to give you more time to open up, it's been overwhelmingly positive. The staff has been amazing. Everyone's been just fantastic, back to the admin. And everything's been very positive in a very negative time. And if you look at some of the schools closed down completely, done remote completely, which I don't want to say was the easier way to go, or was a decision that they made, rather than have some of the challenges that we're working on. The fact that we're open has been pretty positive, and it was working together was pretty awesome.
Yeah, you got to appreciate the flexibility of the faculty and staff and the ability to adapt on the run when the school goes in midstream, when you're just trying to get ready and get things straight for the kids to be here.
and you're just trying to get ready and get things straight for the kids to be here. Who goes to everybody else and appreciates you very much on behalf of you.
I second all those. And I also want to say the kids seemed very well prepared.
Yeah.
For the kids that have been in school to then transition for those couple of days, they had everything they needed coming home with them and they were ready to go at eight AM the next day. So everybody, really, really great job.
Awesome. So just wanted to tell you, that's, that's where we are. Obviously, we've been cleared by the Department Health to be back, uh, because we're here. Um, and, and we hope to remain here. But we'll, we'll do our best, but we're going to follow our protocols to keep people safe. And if that means we have to close again, then we have to close again. If that means we're open for the next six weeks with no problems, knocking on wood, then that's what it means. Um, and no matter what the situation, we'll work together and deal with it. And our community will be right there with us, no doubt.
Related to that, Dan, if, if we do have a closing for a period of time, how are we doing with equipment? I know we're waiting on deliveries and stuff like that.
Yes. Yeah, no, so we're still waiting on deliveries. Actually, I have, I have, uh, not positive news on that. So our Chromebook delivery is actually back in about another month now, based on the most recent update. Uh, not because we got pushed farther down the list, just because production hasn't ramped up like they thought. Uh, and they, they give me exact numbers and they tell me it's like, there's twenty-six thousand ahead of your order. And, you know, they're talking about, they're talking about, you know, late November now, early December. Or before they were talking about early October, but it was August. Uh, so we're doing our best. There are a couple of grade level gaps, especially down towards primary grades where we don't necessarily, we have machines, but not necessarily the machines that we'd like to have with those students. Um, which, which is difficult.
What are some using an iPad as a thing?
Yeah, so, so, and, and so I, we have the appropriate number of the iPads and the Chromebooks ordered so that we will be set to run exactly how we want to. And, um, when they get here, that'll be great. Until then, again, I'll, I'll, I'll commend the staff on their flexibility. I'll commend the parents on their flexibility. Um, there was nobody here last week when we were closing that was, that I, that I dealt with was giving us a hard time. I had people waiting out on the front sidewalk, some for a half an hour because they needed a charger for their iPad. And they just waited and I said, I just need to go back in. And I know Sam was running around and Mindy and Toby were running too. Um, just gotta give us, and they were like, yeah, fine, we'll, we'll be out there when it's time. And, you know, uh, I really appreciate that, so. But they want their kids to have the technology so they're willing to wait. They weren't running out saying, Matt, don't worry about it, you won't do school for the next two days. They were not saying that whatsoever. And one of our goals that we talked about is to get our kids in, get the routine set, have them learn how to use the equipment appropriately. So when something happens, we're set. And I, I, we did a great job. I think we would have been like a hundred percent or ninety-nine percent if all the equipment we needed was here. I would say we were probably ninety percent, eighty-five to ninety percent, absolutely positively ready with the equipment that we have.
Great. Hey, Dan, so I know it was the last meeting we talked about, um, that some kids couldn't even bring their own devices. Did that get set up so that people could do that if they wanted to? That would help with some of that, you know, technology piece, I know it wouldn't help for everybody, but even if that switches up a few machines and, and allocate that way, um, did that hit, hit where we can do that?
Yeah, so the BY, the BYOD network is live and running. Um, Mr. Ray, do we have, we, I know we had some students today that were, were, were struggling with that. Uh, but I think it's first, by first, the piece when they first come in. Do we have students up and running on that right now?
We do. Um, there's, it's, there's been a little configuration that we've had to take place within the IT department. Um, it's, it's, it's weird. Sometimes they're, they're supposed to just be able to log in using their credentials with their login and password. Um, we're finding some devices are working with that, some aren't. Um, Dexter and Jen have been configuring those as needed. Uh, but, um, a- again, that, the, the families that have provided devices for their kids to use have made it possible for us to get devices out to students that have, uh, and families that have no, no devices at all. Uh, but, uh, again, the IT staff has been great in terms of getting those kids all set up.
Yeah, and it, and it's simplest form, it's supposed to run up our active directory. So their, their Google login and password would have, when they put that, it would immediately connect them to everything. Um, it's not working exactly as planned with every device that's coming out the street, which would be expected. Uh, we're seeing a range of devices from stuff that's brand new and stuff that's, you know, has a few years on it.
Is that something that you're going to have in the survey that's going to go out? That may be something that.
If they have their own.
Yeah.
What I would, what I would say though, one of the, one of the, so yes, it's great that some families have a device for their kid to use at home. Um, there are some families that have brand-new MacBooks or brand-new other computers that they don't want to send into school with their kid. Um, which I think anyone that bought a device for, anything for their kid over the years may understand that. So that, that is one of those old things that we didn't think about during the planning. Hey, let us know if you have, if you have a device for your kid. So hey, we have one, but I don't want to go into school, which is what that, but, uh, in the event that we have to go remote, that does, that does help.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. Thank you. Other on the closing?
All right. Um, treasurer's report. Spoke a little briefly about all that great information inside the packets. Um, Charlene is on. Charlene, is there anything you wanted to add to, to the reports?
Um, I, I could give a brief explanation of the, the types of reports that are there. It might be helpful.
Sounds good. Yeah, okay.
The appropriation reports that are multiple column. It gives you, uh, the original budget and then the second column would be budget transfers. So, um, usually that would be a movement, uh, approved by the superintendent and then presented to the board of any adjustments where the budget might have been less than needed for expenditures. And so, uh, we will take from a budget code that might have a little extra in it and put it into a budget code where we need it. So budgets are fluid and they're our best guess, but things come up as we know. So the third column is your adjusted budget. Um, I don't think we had any budget transfers in July and August. So your original budget and your adjusted budget should be the same, uh, through August. I provided reports for you for the current fiscal year for July and August. There's also a revenue status report by August. And again, that is, um, based on any revenue that has been earned, uh, through, um, through July and through August. Um, I believe that we did, uh, post all of the tax receipts as being earned because they've been billed and they've been, um, uh, the tax warrant was issued September first. So, um, if they're not on the August report, they're definitely on the September report. And, um, again, if the board was to approve any amendments or adjustments for continued items or adjustments to the budget, you would see that in the, um, in the second column as far as adjustments to the revenue. Um, the other report that I provided, uh, is, uh, would be budget transfers. And as I said, there wasn't any in July and August. Also, I provided a cash flow, which this is the first time this board has seen a cash flow report possibly ever. And I provided one for July and then one for August. And so that's the projected cash flow for the prior twelve months of the fiscal year. July is actual cash flow and, uh, August is actual cash flow. You can see how we're doing, uh, throughout the fiscal year. And it's cash, not revenue, but it lets you know what kind of cash we have available and when there might be some short calls in the future. Um, so, uh, that is your unrestricted cash flow link. So it does not include the money that comes outside in your reserves. So it gives you the cash that is available for operations, which is a very, very important number for you. Um, so I hope you look at that and I hope you have questions and I hope you appreciate that because it's been a long time coming. And it, it just took, um, you know, isolating, uh, your different accounts and setting up your different accounts. And I appreciate the board, uh, help with, uh, getting that all approved and getting that done. And your other reports are just your bank reconciliations. We also, uh, throw in a treasurer's report, which can do a little more detail. And, uh, we also give you a cafeteria report, a cost in the loss report. So you're not just getting the revenue side or the expenditures, which you're getting the net position. So again, that runs for twelve months and we present it each month. And it, so it tells you, uh, where we are with the cafeteria and if we are at, uh, if we are currently at a, in a loss situation or if we're in the black situation, which we really like to see that. So that, I think, will be very helpful for the board. And the last report we do is the extra classroom activity report. We'll just provide that to the activity treasurer. Uh, it's not a report that we are responsible for, but we help out the extra classroom treasurer by, uh, reconciling to the trial balance for extra classroom and providing a report with the beginning balances, the ending balances, and any receipts or dispersments for the month. So again, the superintendent and the activities treasurer should be signing those reports once they've reviewed them and presenting those to the board. So I think that's enough. Uh, I can answer any other questions that you might have on the twenty-second.
Well, I, I appreciate you joining us on the twenty-second. And I'm sure we're going to have, uh, questions regarding those reports. And I do appreciate the cla- the cash flow report and all the other ones as well. I just have a quick question and really it's just regarding the interest in the, uh, the NY class that we have. We can put some money in that to try to draw some more interest for those, those funds. And I understand that our funds are dwindling, so obviously, interest is less on less mon- less money. Um, but in July, we show eighteen cents, for example, for one, one fund. And in August, we show four dollars and nineteen cents of interest for this one fund. So that obviously means we moved into that fund or is it as simple as that? Or is there some other thing?
We just recently set up those reserves at NY class, um, so that we could, um, again, isolate your restricted cash in reserves. And, uh, this is a way of knowing when we're using our reserve cash instead of our unrestricted cash, which technically, uh, was just recently approved by the governor that you can borrow from your reserves, but you have to pay it back within a certain amount of time and you have to pay it back with interest. Um, many schools have been borrowing from their reserves for quite some time, especially during July and August. It just makes sense to borrow from yourself than to borrow from a bank and have to, have to pay the bank. Um, so I think unofficially, many schools have, have kind of borrowed from their reserves and then put it back, uh, when the tax revenue came in. So, um, you don't always, not all reserves have to be put in a separate bank account, but you do have to calculate the interest earned on those reserves and credit it to the reserves. And I just find it so much easier if it's in a separate account. It just makes it a lot less work.
Charlene, what's that, what's that interest base based on? Do you pay it back with interest?
What was that again?
When we, if we borrow from that reserve and then we have to pay it back, we have to pay it back with interest. What's the interest base for that? I mean, just.
It would just be at the market rates, whatever the market rates are. And it's so small right now. I mean, it's so minimal.
Yeah, you just got, market rate determined by?
I would have to really research that and look that up to answer that question. But again, I think it would be interest you earn, say in, uh, if you have a national and you earned whatever percentage interest you earned there, but some of that money was reserve money, then you would have, you would have to pay it back to a reserve with that interest that you earned.
Okay.
Percentage basis.
And I, I guess it's still the place where we want to be, right? And we moved it into there, hoping to get a better return, which I think we've seen. Um, it's still the best place to be right now.
Um, the difference in any of the accounts are so minimal right now. It really doesn't matter. It wasn't really a matter of earning more interest. It was really a matter of isolating.
Oh, okay. Because we were using one entity, you know.
Yeah, so, so Charlene, the reason why, I think the reason for that question is, so I'll, I'll just do this. Time machine. Two years ago, NY class was paying a much higher rate than Quince thousand national bank was.
No, no. Right now, nobody's paying anything, so. And, you know, we can talk about, um, whether we want to, um, look at the cash flow, uh, more closely and talk about whether we might want to buy a thirty-day or a sixty-day CD and see if we can earn a little more interest that way. Certainly something we can look at and discuss.
Different, we have a lot of money.
Right, even, even a thirty, sixty-day CD, there's a difference.
I appreciate the picture, any other questions, Charlene?
Wait until the twenty-second.
Yeah. We look forward to the twenty-second. Thank you very much, Ray.
You're welcome.
Uh, special guy, we talked about the building walkthrough. Oh, gosh, so sorry.
I almost forgot you, Sam.
I already forgot you, you're not even gone yet. Sam, thank you for being here.
Certainly. Um, so like I said, it's been touched on a few times here. Um, I cannot put into words, um, how hard everyone's working, uh, to make this school year happen. Um, Fort Edward is by far, uh, at the top of the game regarding the quality of education that's being provided to our students. Um, especially when we can look at some other, other area districts. Um, but really, I'm going to focus on Fort Edward because that's, that's who we are, that's what we are. Uh, the staff has gone above and beyond every single day with a new challenge, with a new obstacle. The staff is rising up because it's what we do for the kids. Um, and, uh, you know, the, obviously, as Dan had mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, with that, the COVID closure, um, wi- within a matter of minutes, our building went from full instruction to full family and student support. Um, from having an assembly line of ten people in the cafeteria preparing meals, uh, to getting students to where they needed to go to their families. I, I mean, really, within a matter of minutes, I think that speaks to, to the professionals that, that I've had the opportunity to work with for the last, you know, eight years or so. Um, all, all the way from Alicia and Toby and Mindy, um, to all the instructional staff, the teachers, the support staff. It, it has been impressive to watch every single day. Um, and even today, uh, today, there was a number of staff out and we had people, you know, I, I put an email out looking for some assistance. By the time that I could even walk to the side of the building, all those, all the areas that we needed were already filled from staff stepping up saying, yep, I've got this, I've got that. Um, you know, really just the overall amount of connectivity, um, outreach, communication and collaboration. Uh, again, arguably leaps and bounds, um, leading the way. Really more impressive than what I've heard and, and seen from some other area districts. But again, we're not talking about other districts, we're talking about Fort Edward. Uh, but again, I, I just cannot speak to enough to what everyone collectively has done. So everyone out there that's at this meeting and not here at this meeting, um, you are what has made this possible. Um, the staff spent a lot of time over the summer, hours worth of meetings with myself, um, and, and planning and preparing in those first four days that we had. Uh, this, in this situation, we do this, in this situation, we do that. You know, it, it really, uh, the success that we've had this year is a result of the amount of planning that went into that. So that, that is not an accident that you guys have, that, uh, those who on the board have seen or have heard positive things. And that's really a testament to the, the work people are doing around, around the building. Um, you know, with, with Craig and, and Polly and Mike and, you know, everyone, you know, the cleaners during the day, during, at night. Um, it's, it's, it's been impressive to watch. Um, and it really, you know, I wish everyone the best of luck, you know, as they go forward this year. Um, I will say the challenge on the road ahead, um, is going to be staffing, um, some of these positions in the event that we have absences that are unfilled. Um, you can probably believe that there's a, a shortage, shortage of subs this year, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, but people are not, people are not jumping at sub jobs. Uh, I think we had seven or eight positions unfilled today that we got through the day. Uh, the only thing that I, uh, missed was a ninth-period study hall. That, I was able to fill, a, a teacher across the hall said, boom, I've just seen, I've got the kids. But, you know, that's just, they're there. Um, you know, Mindy and Alicia daily, you know, eh, eh, nightly, you know, we were just texting back and forth. I mean, it's, it, it's ongoing communication to make this happen. That's going to be a challenge. Um, so that's something worth monitoring, making sure that our students are getting the supports needed. Uh, but, but really staffing, you know, minimally, making sure that we have one adult, uh, in each room where there are children. Um, you know, today, today was by far the biggest challenge. Um, but again, we, we did it. Uh, collectively, the staff did it. Um, the arrival and dismissal has come up a few times. Uh, it, it is down to a science and it is impressive to watch. Uh, and that is really, it's all staff-run. Um, myself and Mr. Ward were, uh, positioned outside in the mornings to start the, start the school year. The staff, that's all staff-run. Uh, and a huge thank you to the parents for their, for their flexibility and their own scheduling. Huge thank you to the parents for, for their support, uh, of what we're doing as the school. Um, you know, certainly, there's been some times in the past where there was, there's kind of been some frustration with maybe the arrival or dismissal, um, that's, you know, we've had some challenges there. the arrival or dismissal, um, that's, you know, we've had some challenges there. Everyone understands that we're all working on this together, uh, and, and from parents having to change their own, their own schedules to make this work, uh, it's been great. Um, and to the, to the staff that are running those arrival and dismissal, thank you. Uh, it, it really is, it's, it's impressive. Uh, do you want to remind everyone that tomorrow for students in grades six through 12, uh, is an A day. Uh, that is a result of Wednesday being our flex day. Uh, and since Monday was a holiday, we missed out on those A days, A day. Um, and then that's so that the students can eat, the A day students still get two days of instruction, B day students get two days. Again, that's not something that a lot of other schools are doing. However, you know, we're doing what we know to be professional and moral in terms of our, our commitment to our students. Um, so you know, again, just want to remind the parents and families out there that tomorrow, um, is an A day. Uh, so the B day students and the full remote students will be logged in remotely. Um, I have, uh, gone through and done all the, at least one observation for all of our untenured staff. Uh, the, the untenured staff, uh, the non-tenured teachers, they're doing great. Uh, we have a couple of new staff this year. They're doing phenomenal. Uh, the non-tenured staff that have been there for a few years, you know, it's veteran staff at this point, uh, you know, no concerns with any of the observations that I've done. Um, I have seen amazing use of technology, um, in an effective manner with our non-tenured staff. And it really is actually some of our newer staff are actually sharing out some of their ideas and some of their strategies and some of their methods with some of our, our veteran staff. Um, and to the point that we know some of the veterans have probably even go, hey, I, I know you're doing this. How can I incorporate that? Um, you know, I was in Amanda Lucas's room and she did a, uh, a, a virtual lesson. Uh, it was scheduled for Friday and we ended up being remote Friday and she said, can I still do it Friday? I'm like, Amanda, if you want to do that, by all means, go for it. It will be impressive. Um, she had breakout rooms all set up and she, it was really just really cool stuff. Um, and Miss Toomey as well had some really cool, um, technology that, you know, for, one of the things I was looking at from a science teacher, how do you do science labs without having the kid hands on? Um, I observed her today and it was impressive to watch that. So that's off to her as well. Um, I do want to welcome Ms. Sarah Taylor, uh, and she's our long-term sub for Mr. Koff this year. She was in, uh, quite a bit the last two weeks, kind of on and off, uh, but today was her first day solo. Um, aside from me, me not getting her keys to her until sixth period, everything went great. Um, but, uh, you know, she, she understood what we were working at and, and, uh, you know, Sarah's going to be a great addition to the school. Uh, her background being in elementary music, uh, is going to be great. So, uh, I, I also want to give some recognition to Ms. Kendra Capone, uh, our new school nurse. Um, anyone taking a new nursing job this year had their work cut out for them. Um, Kendra has been awesome. Uh, Ms. Kendra, Ms. Kendra has been great. Uh, she's reached out with questions as needed, but really developed, uh, a level of independence that, I mean, right, right away, boom, she's got it, she could go, hey, department health says this, department health says that, you guys are doing, you know, what, what are we doing here? Her communication and collaboration with, with Dan and myself and, and with the, with the, the students and the teachers and the families. Um, her, her family outreach has been great. So really, so they're very fortunate to have, uh, someone as committed to the, to the school as Kendra has been. Um, I do want to give a, a thank you to the PTO. Uh, they're going to be putting on their first, or really our first annual, uh, pumpkin patch day at Fort Edward. Uh, typically this is done as a field trip. Obviously that's not happening this year. Uh, they are going to convert the football field into a pumpkin patch. Please do not tell your kids that the pumpkins did not grow there. Uh, they, we, we planted them there, uh, this spring and they just happened to grow up there. So when, uh, our kindergartners and Shawna's class, our first graders go out, uh, our football field will be a pumpkin patch, um, this Friday. Uh, social distancing will be in effect. Um, I did talk with Audra, Audra, thank you as well, about what are some, how can we do this? How can we do that? As long as it's socially distanced with spots or different classrooms. I know I will not be here Friday, but I fully, um, I can imagine how it's happening and it's, those are the kind of things that we do for, for the kids at Fort Edward. So thank you to the PTO for making that happen. Um, students in grade, well, so grades six through 12, uh, the five week progress report period, believe it or not, has already closed, uh, and grades will be going out. Uh, teach for those in the, in the E-school this week. So those progress reports will be going out later this week or early next week. It's hard to believe we're already five weeks into it and really on, on our way to the end of the first quarter. Uh, again, so I, I know a lot of the staff, they've been putting an emphasis on really using the comment section to provide parents with an update, uh, on the successes as well as some of the challenges that they're having on a case-by-case basis. Uh, those are, that is our, our, our means of, one of our many means of communication. So be, be on the lookout for those. Um, it's just, uh, like, like it's been echoed many times here. It, it has been amazing to see the successes that we've had this year. The kids have been phenomenal. Um, I don't want to go about, you know, I mean, the behaviorally it's been great, but it just in terms of overall student performance, student engagement, student attendance. I mean, when you compare it to the past spring night and day, and we know, we knew it was going to be different because of all the work that put into it. Um, I, I just cannot thank every single person at Fort Edward for, for making it as successful as it's been. And, uh, I want to close out and obviously thank Dan, uh, and the board for allowing me to, to serve the students in the capacity, the many, the, many of the capacities that I have, um, for as long as I have. Um, it, it's something I'll always look back on and be thankful to have this opportunity. And finally, I really, um, you know, a few thanks. Number one, the students, you know, the, the students at Fort Edward, uh, you know, I've had a chance to talk with a few of them in a personal level. You, you have made these past eight years amazing. Um, the, the support staff, Mindy, working with you, uh, and right to the, the, the teachers, um, you got, you are amazing. Uh, and really to, to those, I know there's many tough decisions ahead and there's, there's a rocky road ahead. Um, the faculty and staff at Fort Edward are amazing people that have done amazing things for the children of Fort Edward. Um, you know, e- every single person I've worked with touches kids' lives and impacts kids' lives in an amazing manner. And I, I just, to, to the faculty and staff out there, thank you for everything. Um, and to those making some tough decisions, you know, you're not going to find a better group of people than people that I've had a chance to work with for the past eight. They are head and shoulders above the rest, phenomenal people. And it's, it's been an honor to be part of the family. Um, and if you're part of the family, you know, uh, I've had an opportunity to be part of that and, uh, I'll always have my Fort Edward pride. So, um, thank you all for everything. Uh, I wish you all the best and to the incoming candidate, have a chance to talk with that individual here tomorrow, hopefully. Um, you know, it's the, the, the steps for success have been put in place and that's a testament to everybody there. So I want to thank everyone for a wonderful eight years and, uh, signing off. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sam.
You know, I got to say a few of us.
Thank you, Sam.
When, uh, you interviewed for the principal position, I think I said it last time, we were both worried that taking you out of the classroom because your relationship with the kids was so important to you and to the kids. Um, and you had talked to that when you interviewed, you had said how you want to make sure you keep the balance of being with the kids and having been a member of the faculty now becoming an admin, you're going to balance that relationship as well. And you fight on all cylinders and have done an incredible job. The kids just love you. The faculty works with you. Um, you're great with Dan and the admin. You've just, you've exceeded our expectations in this room, Sam, and we really appreciate it. And I'd like to invite you to come back if your schedule permits to graduation this year, because I know those kids that are graduating spent a lot of time in the classroom and outside the classroom. I'm sure they'd love to see you come back.
Yeah, I'm fully intent on being there. There's, uh, this group is, actually it's this group of seniors is, uh, the last group of students that I had a chance to actually have in the classroom. Um, and I have a great relationship with all the kids in the, in the whole district, but certainly, um, you know, there, there's a personal side. Once you have a chance to, to be in a classroom with a kid, there, there's nothing like it. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
All right. Let's get over to Craig. So, uh, buildings and grounds report is Craig on?
Yes, he is.
Hey, Craig.
How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize for not making the walkthrough tonight. I totally forgot. Um, but, uh, if there was, if there were any, uh, issues that were seen or that would, you would like addressed, uh, please let me know or, um, Mr. Ward and, uh, we'll take care of it, um, the best that we can.
You've been working great. We understand completely.
So, so, so Craig, I'll jump in quick. So
Yep.
There, there was nothing that anybody saw that we need to be concerned about right now. Additionally, I'd let everybody know that today was not the day that you normally work at the Fort Edward School.
Correct.
Well, thanks for throwing yourself in after I didn't touch a good job, taking care of you. But everything I said to the board was true. Uh, Craig was at forty in today.
Well, I just wanted to be honest.
Yeah. It's understandable. You guys have been working very hard, you and your team. You got double duty too. So we appreciate it.
Sorry to throw you in, Mr. Ward.
Okay, I'll survive it. Craig, he says everything looks great. So nice job.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to commend the staff, the cleaning staff, and I'll tell you, they've been giving a hundred and ten percent, um, and going above and beyond to clean and keep the school safe and secure for everybody attending. Um, actually in the past three days, when we had the COVID positive, that is probably the cleanest school within New York State, because we, we triple cleaned that school from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So I, I commend my staff and they are really putting a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent effort into making sure that everything is safe for everybody.
Craig, does that mean that we're not the cleanest school in the state every day?
No, I'm not. Well, and we're not going to back off is what I'm saying, but, uh, we do the best that we can and, uh, we're going to continue to do that.
Thanks, Craig. So Craig, a couple of things that, that probably worth mentioning. We had our, we had our boiler inspection and do you want, can you speak to that briefly?
Yes, with our new, uh, insurance company, we had a, uh, boiler inspector that came to the facility and all the boilers and everything passed with fine colors. So we got certificates and we are good to go with that. So, uh, that's a positive.
And then if you could speak to the, to, uh, bus, bus thirty briefly as well, it was in that.
Yes, bus thirty, um, I got a call, well, I, there was a, a rear seal leak and there's, um, malfunction in the door operation. So we brought the bus to Leonard. Um, obviously the bus came from a dealership, which is Denord Chevrolet. So the repairs have to be done through the dealership. We brought the box down Friday, um, and I got a call yesterday from, uh, Leonard Buck. So we have to address that through Denord Chevrolet or DePaul. DePaul is not doing any work due to COVID, um, but Leonard is researching where we can get the bus in. Um, so when we do have an appointment, I have mentioned to them that if the bus is, is, uh, held up for a couple of days, we will need a replacement. And that has to come from a, um, verification from the dealership to let us to do that. But, uh, and apparently what I was told is when we purchased that bus, the rear seal leak was supposedly had been fixed prior to us receiving the bus. Um, I don't believe that was done. I'm not going to say it was or wasn't, but, uh, Brian Collins, he, um, when we brought it in for our inspection, that rear, rear steel was leaking. So I'm in the process of trying to figure and get that buck in to be repaired and get it back to its in a hundred percent condition.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Questions for Craig about it?
Thank you, Craig. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Building walkthrough, we spoke about audit.
Yep. So just, we, we had that special meeting. Uh, we also had a finance committee meeting before our last special meeting where we talked about the, we were, see the presentation about the audit process. Just wanted to, to make sure that if anybody had any questions, that they provided them, um, to Tom, because he, he is your direct link to the auditors. Uh, if the board has questions, they can run them through him. Uh, the reason for that, not that they can't run through me, but if there's any concern, it's about me or management or business office, whether it's a direct link, um, to the board president. So if you have something to hear about, then, uh, please make sure he has that information.
Cause they did give us their information in the last slide.
Right.
They said, contact us, but we'll make sure we go through.
And, and you can do it individually as well.
Directly to them as well if you can, for them.
Yeah, I would, I would say that it's, um, certainly they're going to present, you'll have a chance to ask questions, but if they're having a lot of questions, it's a lot of times it's more completely if they have them ahead of time. That's all I had on there unless you folks ask specific things.
Any questions on that? And that's, again, that's the 22nd at 6:30 and we'll have our other meeting. All right, consent agenda. Need approval for, of minutes for board meetings held on July 7th, August 4th, August 17th, August 27th, August 31st, and September 14th. Need motion. Todd.
Thank you.
All right, who'd like here? Dan.
I got, I got one question. Other than, you know, the typos or any grammatical things. Are we looking at, are you there, Tobe?
He's out there.
August 27th, uh, 7B, the personnel. B has got, there's a resolution that follows the following positions, but the positions aren't listed because the vote is there. So we probably need those positions listed where we're supposed to be there. Is she all right, Dan?
Yes, I got it. I marked it out. Yeah.
That could come in for you at some point.
27?
Yeah, 27.
What, what, what little number was it?
7B. What's the hell, man?
Okay.
That?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have anything different from the master, Toby?
No, that's it.
I'll get together with Toby on that one.
So that motion is going to include tabling 827. All right. And we'll amend the motion not to include August 27th and then we'll vote to table that. So I need approval of minutes for board meetings July 7th, August 4th, August 17th, August 31st, and September 14th. There's two motions on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All good? Okay. I need a motion to table the minutes of August 27, 2020. James? Chris? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good? Okay. All good on that. So amend that motion. Okay. Uh, I need a, uh, motion for consent agenda items B and C. Press Joe Carroll. Any discussion on B and C? All in favor?
Aye.
All good. Okay. Action items. We don't have any.
Nope. So, so for A and B, there's none. I do leave my, the, the agenda to this month time. If we don't have them there, folks asked where they were. So I wanted to be very apparent that we didn't have any this month.
I need, yes, 10,435.
Correct.
I need a motion to accept the donation from the Fort Edward Booster Club in the amount of $10,435 and to amend the 2020 and 2021 school budget to reflect the donation and expenditure of the donated funds. Booster Club is making donations to support the offering of extracurricular activities for Fort Edward students. Need a motion. James and Chris? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, thank you again to the Booster Club and everyone involved in supporting that effort. All in favor?
Aye.
All good, right? Need a motion to approve the MOA between the Fort Edward School District and the Southern Adirondack Substitute Teachers Association. Motion. James? Joe? Documents were included in our packets. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone's good. Motion to approve the athletic mergers with Hartford Central School District. Motion to approve the athletic mergers with Hartford Central School District for baseball and softball for the two thousand and twenty-one season. Danny, Chris, any discussion?
So I want to jump in. It does not mean that we have baseball and softball for the twenty-one season, but if we don't approve the mergers now, we won't make any of the statutory deadlines to put that paperwork into section two in New York State. So that's why it's on there.
Michelle did talk about some of these being paid a thousand dollars already.
So we have to keep us as members of the standing. And the same for, when we get to the argument, same for the next one now. It just makes it possible if the money comes through the fundraising.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good. Need a motion to approve the athletic merger with Augisle Central School District for tennis the two thousand and twenty-one season. Chris and Dan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all good. Okay, on to personnel. Need a motion to accept the letter of resignation from the position of school nurse from Susan Horn effective July first, two thousand and twenty. James and Dan, any discussion? That was included due to.
Yeah, just, it was omitted in the previous, previous meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personal item B. Motion to amend the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty resolution to appoint Russell Batty to read, be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Fort Edward Unified School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Russell Batty using applicable grants, donations, and cares act funding to a three-year probationary appointment, appoint six FTE teacher of special education in special education tenure area, commencing September one, two thousand and twenty, ending August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Contingent bond applies with the requirements of education law. Mr. Batty holds initial certification, special education. Mr. Batty is appointed to starting salary per FETA contract, roll of benefits and salary reductions per the FETA contract and effective MOAs. Pending the receipt and review of all official transcripts and required employment paperwork. Changes clerical in nature. The September fourteenth resolution read point five FTE.
There's one, there's one other word. Please change the word initial to permanent. It's one, two, three, four lines up on the right-hand side.
Mr. Batty holds permanent certification.
Permanent, yeah.
Special education. Okay, need a motion. Joe and Christina, any discussion? All in favor? All good. Thank you. Be resolved, the Board of Education, Fort Edward Unified School District hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint John Galar Nu.
Galarno.
Galarno, thank you. To a four-year probationary appointment as a one-point-zero FTE pre-K to twelve principal in the building principal tenure area commencing October nineteen, twenty twenty, and ending October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Contingent bond applies with the requirement of the education law. Mr.
Mr. Galarno.
Galarno, God better write. Holds initial certification as a building administrator. Mr. Galarno is appointed using applicable grants, donations, and cares act funding at a starting salary of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars with all other benefits and salary reductions per the FETA contract and effective MOAs. Pending the receipt and review of all official transcripts and required employment paperwork. Need motion. Dan, Christina.
Move back up. FEAA contract.
FEAA.
Sorry.
And fits in salary reductions per the FEAA contract.
Yep.
Effective MOAs. Here we have motions, any discussion?
Who were the, who were your people, sorry?
Myself.
Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
You're good. Motion to appoint Sarah Taylor as a long-term music substitute effective October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty at a per diem rate per the FETA contract, roll of benefits and salary reductions per the FETA contract, effective MOAs, pending the receipt and review of all official transcripts and required employment paperwork. Need motion. Chris, Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good. Motion to appoint Joanna Scott and Ryan Herman as National Honor Society co-advisors for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year at a rate of salary per contractual rate using available donation. I'm sorry. Want to loop them? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Let's do E and then I'll group the rest, okay?
I was just thinking that maybe it would be nice for the public to know exactly what the donations are.
So we can read them all and do a motion for them all?
Yeah, just so we.
You want to read them all? You want to read motion to approve, then read E through, E through J.
Okay, I didn't get any motions on that yet, right? I'll pick that up. All right, so most two points, Joanna Scott and Ryan Herman as National Honor Society co-advisors. Most to appoint Nelson Chase and Marianne Stark as co-yearbook advisors. Most to appoint Pete Prindle as yearbook business advisor. Most to appoint Maggie Tora as junior class advisor. Most to appoint Debbie Delisle and Lori Deserdy as class, senior class co-advisors. Keith Majaka and Nancy Williams as co-advisors for the ski club. At a rate of pay per contractual rate using available donations. Motions. Chris, Dan, sorry, I didn't see that one. All in, any discussion? All in favor? We'll look at all. Okay, so what am I doing with K?
So K will take no action, so it'll, it'll die. And so I will address K. So I did, I did put it out, that, that was vacated by a teacher who resigned just before school started. So I put it back out to the teachers association membership as a vacancy, did that over the weekend. I do have at least, I have, no, I have one interested individual, but I didn't want to left that, that information be with the teachers association for a little bit longer before we appoint somebody.
Okay.
But we definitely have a highly qualified interested individual at this point, but we need to make sure that we allow enough time for other individuals to apply if they'd like to.
When does the Audi Club start?
They usually try to do a winter trip. I don't know what a new advisor's plans would be, but they try to do a winter trip and in some years it gets pushed to spring. Sometimes when I first started, sometimes they would do a fall day trip and then a winter overnight, things like that. So it's, it's kind of been based on the advisory and then more based on weather conditions.
Gotcha.
We had one year we had to cancel it because the roads, we were going to put a bus on the road, it just wasn't going to happen.
Gotcha. Toby, have you received any comments from the public for the second public session?
I have not. I, let me look at the chat though. No, that's all, congratulations to Sam. I, I don't have any.
Before we go into that second public, I do see that, I see that John Galarno is on there. Okay, so I just want to take a second and welcome, welcome, John. And just let you know that if your report is as long as Sam Raddie's.
Over here, long.
That's a big problem, man. No, that's, that's a duel for Sam. But welcome aboard to you, to you, John. Thanks. I wanted to get Sam a little thing here, but John's actually going to be coming up to Fort Edward tomorrow to meet with Sam and to get around the building with Sam and I, to get to the folks. So there's John. So we can see John without his mask, so welcome aboard, John. And, and we appreciate you having, having you there and thanks for coming out to the meeting, you know, even though you didn't need to. And Sam, sorry I had to give you that last jab.
I wouldn't expect anything less, Dan. I'll, I'll see you tomorrow.
See you.
So I do have one item for executive session I'd like to speak to the board about, has to do with the employment of specific individuals. I don't believe it will be long. I also don't plan for there to be any action after executive session. Does any board member think there'll be anything for action for after executive session?
I think so.
So for the public, what we will do is we will stop the recording and then we'll come back into public session and it shouldn't be very long. And then we'll start the recording again, we'll finish the meeting. And as you know, our meetings are put online as soon as we can get the video put together and posted to our website, so it'll be there for you. So we don't expect there'll be any action, but we do need to talk just for a few minutes.
So I need a motion after executive session to discuss plans with current personnel. Todd, Joe, Board of Education members and other individuals invited to the executive session are reminded that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in strictest confidence. All in favor? Thank you, young exec. Thank you, public, for being here. We appreciate your.
Thank you all. Take care and.
Bye, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Bye later.
Just hold up for the second public. So just remember that when everything's live, so give me a minute to show you.
It was very cold over here.
It was Todd and Joe and it was eight zero on the vote.
Yes.
And I'm just trying to get the time, although Toby's probably got it. She and I work together to get these things right.
Need a motion to adjourn. Joe, Dan. Again, I'm looking that way, I'm so sorry. I'm super sorry, Mike, Dan, you know, I gotta open my, I need to, I need to change my seat. All in favor?
Thanks, everybody. I don't know if anybody's out there from the, I think it's south.
I think it's just mine. It's just me, poor time.
So, but so the mic is still hot, but everybody have a great evening.
What was the, what was the count on, was it eighteen people?
On the meeting earlier, I'm not.